... critical to, you know, the board's review so that it would hopefully give back time to you and your staff when preparing these types of annual reports.
Well, thank you for that question, Ms. McLaughlin, because we do look at it from that lens. That's one of the beauties of having Ms. Quinn, our Chief Operating Officer, looking at this as well with the new reorganization is to streamline and to weed out some of that ancillary information. Our team does look at it from that perspective. Mr. Fred Ellis pointed out some things that we had there in the past that really didn't make any sense, that were just reported, pulled off of other reports that didn't provide the context to your point. So, we are constantly looking at that and then obviously, we'd love to reduce this document to make it more streamlined.
So, to my colleague, Mr. Velkoff's question, one next step I'd like our board to consider is asking Mr. Plattenberg's staff to provide the board and the superintendent with recommendations on which measures we could reduce in the monitoring report to really focus more on those that are, you know, essential and less essential. And then, Mr. Plattenberg, one last question is about the cost per pupil in those bus runs. One thing that I think would help us as a board in talking with the community is how do we compare to other school systems our size in the region in cost per pupil for transportation?
Hmm.
Because I think that's really what it comes down to in the end is everyone's got the fuel costs and they've got salary and compensation costs for living in an expensive area like the Washington metropolitan area. But, right now, when I look at these numbers, I don't know if $415 is great compared to our neighboring jurisdictions or are we that much higher? So, that might help in all of us with our oversight to get that information and that would be my other next step request is do other school systems provide that cost per pupil? And if they do, I would very much welcome seeing that. Of those who are comparable in size, Montgomery County, Loudoun, Prince William, not the smaller school systems like Arlington or Falls Church or City of Fairfax.
Okay.
Okay, next is Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I echo Ms. McLaughlin. I think this is a very extensive report and I can only imagine how much time it's spent to put this together. I do have concerns about that and I know we'll be talking about that in our governance work session later today, but thank you. Very, very good and thorough and a lot of substance here. So, thanks to the staff too. But, point well taken that this does take you away from doing other work when you're producing a huge report like this. So, you mentioned several things and I'm going to focus on those: capacity, staffing, and bus parking. Regarding capacity, I do want to say that I acknowledge and support your desire to do more boundary-light types of boundary studies because we all acknowledge how much effort is involved in a complete boundary study. So, thank you for that. And also, I wanted to mention and ask you if you feel that we are doing enough to combine the instruction versus the facilities' related issues together. You and I have chatted briefly about the desire that the AAPAC, the Advanced Academics Charge, this year will be working with FPAC to begin to look at the relationship between the AAP programming and capacity. So, I just, I wondered, do you have a comment about that? Do you think that we need to be doing more of that, kind of looking at both pieces together rather than separately?
Well, I think we have been doing that. One of the things that I know Dr. Garza's had us do is working with Mr. Persidio in that area. And as I said before, having the streamline of the Chief Operating Officer and Chief Academic Officer, those are just natural outcroppings of that group, looking at how we can work together on all the issues associated with programs and capacity.
Very good. Thank you. Next, regarding staffing, and it's still a concern, I think, of all of us that we are just not doing the maintenance the way that we know we should. And those of us on Infrastructure Finance Committee, you know, we talked about that in spades. So, I wonder, have we looked at creative options to try to get that done? For example, you know, contracting out versus hiring because our benefits are expensive? Or, working with the county staff? Have you looked at things like that to try to maximize the resources that we do have?
We have, and we do have partnerships with the county where they do assist us in our maintenance of our fields and so forth. We have gotten creative. Mr. Crawford has started expanding an evening shift. It's reported out in some of the documents here. And we continue to look at that. I do want to make a statement though, for the record, that this body had recognized the need for the additional personnel that was vetted and provided through the FEA in their individual objective report on where we should be staffed. And that you have graciously supported us in getting additional positions in those areas. I didn't want to make it sound like that wasn't happening. And the challenge with the latest budget rounds and the economy and so forth has been sporting at best, but, you know, we're trying to be as creative as we possibly can. The latest one that we've done is we've added a second shift for painting, the painting crews, some 20-some individuals. But, it does talk about some of the partnerships. It does speak to, in the document, the fact that we have been creative about what we do and how we do it. And we're going to continue to look at that. We do outsource a number of the things that we provide, both in our, to supplement our resources, but also to provide things that are better off done by somebody else.
Okay, thank you. And what about the $13 million that we'll be getting, I guess it's this coming fiscal year, from the supervisors, as we agreed in our Infrastructure Finance Committee? Have we decided as a group, or have, do you have a recommendation yet about how we'll spend that money? I didn't see that in here, but is there an assumption that we're just going to put it into the queue and continue business as usual?
Currently, it is forecast in our cash flow and I think we're going to probably get into that discussion a little bit later on, but-
Yes.
You know, we basically have, Mr. Sneed has incorporated that in when we anticipate it coming in to the existing direction and initiatives we have.
Thank you. I'm talking as fast as I can. Regarding the, I guess, we've covered capacity, staffing, and bus parking, but there's one more issue that's near and dear to my heart and my colleagues know because I bring it up every year: community use. This is an area of great concern for me. It has been for five years and now I see that we are, not only are we still losing money providing this service, we're losing more money. Now, we're losing net $7 million a year by providing community use. So, no value judgment on that right now, but I'm putting it out there as an area that I think we need to talk about. That is not our critical mission. It's a nice thing to be able to do, but when we're losing $7 million and we can't give teachers, you know, full years of raises, it begs the question. So, I'm just putting it out there. No need to comment on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reed, did you have any suggested action item related to the last thing, or were you just planting a seed for us to ruminate on?
Well, the action would be, I think, to come up with some kind of a feasibility analysis for how we might be able to provide that service in a more cost-effective manner.
So, a report back on how we might close that deficit. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
Yes. Yes, and I know, in the past, we've talked about this and I can already anticipate what some people will say. That's a wonderful community service. The nonprofits can't afford to pay more, et cetera. But, I'm still saying, we need to discuss it.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Moon to be followed by Mrs. Smith and then Ms. Schultz. So, Mr. Moon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, for the nice report. I have a couple of questions, one regarding minivans and second regarding construction cost increase. As to the minivans, I saw in the executive summary that lifespan is about 90,000 miles in six years. I mean, I've been driving my own minivan for now almost 20 years and I wish I could get rid of my minivan at 90,000 mile mark or six years. Is that, is that, I mean, that's nine, could you tell us the justification for 90,000 miles or six years?
Well, basically-
Most of the people I know do drive their minivans for much longer than 90,000 or six years.
Basically, what we do is, in terms of our fleet, it's really taking a look at what DVS does provide for us. You do realize that the county does provide that service for us to maintain our fleet. So, when we look at the replacement cycle for those, the minivans that we provide that supplement and save us quite a bit of money, you know, we kind of feed off of that. If that's something that we want to go ahead and take a look at, the maintenance and operating costs and the recommended replacement value. I know that when I was in a neighborhood district, I used to operate the garage and we used software called Faster Software that used to manage the maintenance and operating cost of any vehicle in the fleet, no matter what type, and it would come up with the metrics for replacement. We can go ahead and question them further about that to say, hey, is there any way we can get additional mileage out of it? Because I have a vehicle right now with 175,000 miles on it and I hope that it doesn't go anywhere anytime soon because the replacement costs associated with it. So, I totally agree with your concept about running the vans a little bit longer and maybe it's a matter of getting my drivers to talk to you about how they drive. I don't know. But, I think it is based upon the software. But, we can follow up with DVS to see, in fact, if there is a way that we can expand that and what the operational, the breakeven costs are so you can see why the determination is approximately 90,000 miles.
Okay. I would love to see whether you, you know, if you could look into further in this-
Okay.
Whether we could get a little more mileage out of minivans.
Yes, sir.
And second is with the construction cost increase. I mean, I see that in the report, it's a 4.5% over the last year. Is that 4.5% more than you anticipated?
No, sir.
Or about the same?
It's really the 4.5% increase over the prior expenditures that we have. It has gone up a little bit more recently because of what we mentioned about the subcontractors and the bidding environment right now. But, the materials and the supplies, for example, copper has gone up, bends and elbows in copper, steel's gone up, gypsum and drywall has gone up. So, we have seen some increase in materials as well, not just the bidding environment and the climate.
Okay. Again, my question is whether that increase is more than you anticipated or is about the same?
No, it's about the same. It's within the range of what we projected. Yes, sir.
I know that we are able to do all the construction as reasonably planned through FY '19, if I recall reading from the report.
Yes, sir. That's an accurate statement. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Mrs. Smith, to be followed by Ms. Schultz and then Ms. Heinz. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. A request about Megan's next step. I would ask that that get moved to the governance work session where we'll be talking about the report for the future. I have a question following on Patty's question about the community use on page 30. It says that the increase in total community use cost is due to the additional 25 positions and facilities management. So, if you could just, I guess I didn't capture what that really means there. And then, I understand the other, the pieces of the reclassification of custodians there. But, I wanted to understand how that impacted the cost. I do think it's a balance when you look at the cost of our community use. Kind of makes you crazy when it costs us money to do it. And I figure staff is still doing the analysis that they do, you know, looking at whether their areas charge for community use, so we're in the market with that. I just didn't understand how the 25 positions were related to that.
It's basically part of the factor that's included, but we'll be happy to give you something that breaks it out because your point is spot-on. When you take a look at our community use, we break out the costs associated with, when you take a look at our overall FM costs, in terms of what we charge out for utilities, it does have a gap. And I think we can provide you something that more clarifies more readily so it doesn't give that skewed perspective that just because of the 25 additional folks.
Yeah, this is trade-off. I don't know if I really want more information, but, you know, I think Patty's already asked the question of, is there anything we can do to close that gap of what it costs us to what we do? You know, the other thing that I think is powerful about the report and kind of makes me crazy, it's obvious there's things we need to do that we haven't been able to afford. And I hope that we can use that information from this report as we develop our next budget because we are behind in positions we need to help us with our maintenance and all that. So, there's good information here that I hope we can leverage as we build the next budget. Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Schultz.
So, thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. One of the questions and a little bit what Ms. Smith had just brought up, that there's good information here, but sometimes I'm wondering, you know, my obsession with infographics and communicating data in a meaningful way. And we've asked about a map, for example, where preschool students are in the county so we understand where the needs are. And if one of our biggest issues is capacity, then for me, the question still remains, as a visual, where's the capacity of the problem? Because, we have 194 schools and when you bury it in a CIP, you know, there's a lot of analysis that the board members have to do in order to figure out where the problem is, where an overview that shows, hey, listen, the, you know, here's the hot red, you know, here's the light red, here's the, you know, orange-yellow, whatever, areas that highlights for us in a meaningful way where the problems are and allows us to have, I think, intriguing conversations like we had to have for Ms. Evans' area for, you know, a new facility that stretched our bounds. So, that is a suggestion maybe going forward. It's not an action item for a next step, but a visual that shows us where the problem is. The second thing, I'd like to touch on the special needs issue. Aren't our short buses for students with disabilities reimbursed by the state?
I don't, I don't believe that all of them are, to be honest with you. I think there's a portion of them, but I'd have to, yeah, I think it's only a percent, but I can follow up with you the exact percentage in what I get.
Well, I think that's very important for us to understand because, not that it's not an issue, but if it's a projected increasing need, it's one thing, but I think that we need to understand because some of it isn't a true cost to the system-
Mm-hmm.
-because it is being reimbursed. And it was my understanding that actually a fair amount is. So, you know, I'm befuddled to hear, I'm befuddled, Ms. Reed, I'm befuddled to hear that it's maybe a small amount. And that clarity, I don't see here in terms of what we get from the state because then that helps do things like drive our legislative package. And so, it's hard to understand, you know, that. So, I don't know if that's potentially a next step is an identification for us, Dr. Garza?
I made a note of that. I think it's beyond just the transportation cost. I think it'd be enlightening probably for us, for all of us, to see what cost for special education program we're being provided. I think I'll be surprised at how low that percentage is-
How low it is.
Overall. Locally, we're going to be bearing most of that burden if I guessed correctly.
Okay. I have some quick things. I forget who brought it up, but regional parking, you know, that is something, you know, Ms. Bolivar was here earlier this morning. That is something that we have got to, I believe, because one flat, you know, central place, I can see driving costs up because if everybody's got to come back to ground zero in order to, you know, we're just going to put more miles on the bus. But, every single place where there is a county facility, a library, or whatever, you know, maximizing, you know, jointly-owned public use facilities for that parking, of the Velveeta boxes, is that what you called it? I love that. That's hilarious. That's the first time I've ever heard that. You know, if, does there need to be more coordination with the county in order to help us, help them, help all of our residents not have, you know, school buses or Velveeta boxes parked in their neighborhoods? And I know that's a big issue. You know, maybe it's not in some areas, it is in others, big time. So, is that, like, an ongoing conversation with the county?
Whenever, whenever the opportunity arises, one of the discussion points we have is about parking with buses. So, it has been ongoing. I don't think it's gone away, in addition to parking and maintenance for their fleets as well.
Well, that may need to be a more deliberative, a discussion held in a more deliberative fashion. And then, last note, two things. Quickly, the subsidy, I mean, the community use issue, you know, I agree. That is not our primary, you know, that's not our raison d'etre. And so, if that's the case and there's a lot of community use and a lot of public good that comes out of that, then I think that that could be something that we could partition from the budget and have a separate, again, a separate discussion with the Board of Supervisors that says, hey, you know what, these many millions, you know, are something that we're performing as a public service. You know, they're certainly not going into the county government center and using the county government center. They're going to the closest school. And we're, in effect, subsidizing that. And so, I think we need to push back on and look at potentially, I'm not sure what the cost is. You know, the flip side is, which I always love, is, is there any way for us to get the cost down? Because, is it janitors? Is it utilities? You know, what is it that makes it so expensive to just open a building? And that's a bigger discussion. But, you know, if, we should not be underwriting the public's use of the building on the backs of the education of kids. And that's just a statement. And then, the last thing is, is I really think that we ought to look at, and we've had discussions about this before, Mr. Plattenberg, the potential for alternative fuel. I know that that's been, you know, looked at in the, in the past. We did have the fortune, for those of us who did it, at the National School Board Association Conference in New Orleans. A lot of different vendors were there and I spent actually a lot of time talking to one segment, which was transportation and propane buses and quieter and the buses, the bus drivers love them and the kids, they can hear the kids all the way at the back of the bus and they save money per mile, and, and, and. And so, you know, when you can't figure out a way to drive fewer miles, then you got to figure out a way to drive those miles more efficiently. And even if it has been researched in the past, you know, technology changes and, you know, whatever we can do to do what we're doing more efficiently to save us money, I think is, it has to be on the table, you know? And in perpetuity, it has to be on the table.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Next is Ms. Heinz, to be followed by Ms. Darnett Kofax. Ms. Heinz.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for this report. Sorry, I was running late. So, if my questions have already been answered, I'm happy to catch up offline. I wanted to talk a little bit about sustainability and you do touch on this in several places in the report about energy and waste and stormwater. There are lots of places where we're dealing with that. And I see the mention of synergistic and that's exciting. I think that's going to help us approach the energy use in our existing buildings. That's my understanding of what synergistic is about, that it's about energy use in our existing buildings. So, that's exciting. But, I wondered if, you and I have talked about this a little bit, so I wondered if you wanted to comment a little bit on sort of going forward as we design renovations and new buildings. And maybe it's hard to do this in a minute, but just to talk about how we might be thinking about designing our buildings for sustainability going forward.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And I don't spend enough time really going off on this because there is so much going on in Fairfax County Public Schools. Mr. Sneed and his staff in Design and Construction were leaders in the area of sustainability and the CHIP standard that's been adopted by the state of Virginia. He worked with both Loudoun County and Prince William County in developing that standard. And I wasn't here then when he was in the process of doing that. But, I did know that the work that was being done was being shepherded by his staff and his oversight. What does that provide? That provides some amazing sustainable components that are in our design and in our construction. But, our vision, we have so many things going on that are right in Fairfax County Public Schools. We're working to, through the synergistic contract, even though that is just really electrical reduction, consumption reduction. We're looking to use that as a part of the culationation to work with Elaine Toll and folks over in the curriculum and instruction side for all of the different initiatives that we have and the partnerships that we currently have. We're looking to expand that with not only our construction program, with our operational program, and really with what the students are doing in our schools every day. Because there are amazing stories out there to be told and we feel that we have not been giving you the opportunity to tell those stories as effectively as possible. We just had another school, Lake Anne, that was recognized as a green flag elementary school, which is huge. That's the second one that I'm aware of as of late. So, we have a number of things that are really going well, incredibly well. And by tying this all together with our greater vision about the sustainable initiatives that are going on and articulating exactly what we're doing in our design and construction processes as well as operationally, I think that's a huge opportunity space and I thank you for bringing it up.
The other thing, let me just add to that. Our partnership with synergistics will also provide us opportunity to get as many of our schools as possible to be Energy Star certified.
Certified by the EPA.
And so, I think that's going to be important. We do have a few that have been doing that, but-
Forty of them.
We know that there's a lot more opportunity and we need to do a better job of telling that story. So, I think that's underway.
Great. Well, I want to thank you. You know that two of those schools are in Hunter Mill, who recently got-
I'm aware of that.
Flint Hill and Lake Anne. So, just pointing that out. And I would mention, for those who may not know, LEED certified is the, is the name that most people understand in building sustainability, but the CHIP certification, as I understand it, is more appropriate for school buildings and that's why we go there.
Well, it's also that the whole LEED initiative came out early on, the Green Building Council. They, they came out with an initiative that was ripe for the opportunity because there wasn't a lot of talk and initiative and inertia towards sustainable design that was really getting really the legs that it needed and recognition. So, that was really pretty much a one horse that came out. And people who tied into that, it was a great program for its time because it got the focus and the awareness. Well, most places are finding that it's exceeded its useful life. It maybe needs to reinvent itself as a partner with all of these other initiatives, whether it's Green Globe, the EPA, whether it's CHIPS. All of those components are now a part of a greater picture of sustainable initiatives. And as Dr. Garza says, when you mention the EPA, people, oh, yeah, they recognize the label. But, the EPA, the Energy Star certification means we're operating with our top 25% of our peer groups of efficiency. And that is pretty amazing when you're operating within that realm of efficiency. So, when you start really talking about what it really means, it's opened up a whole new category and categorization of areas for sustainability.
Great, thank you. And I did meet recently with Elaine Toll, our environmental educator, and I'm very excited about the fact that we are involving the students in their learning in all this planning. It's the best part of it, I think. Just wanted to briefly talk a little bit about, I saw that you mentioned our homeless students and how that does affect facilities and transportation. I know, just from talking to folks on, in the schools, that they are working with folks in the county, you know, at that, that sort of staff level. People are working together to try to make that happen. An example is, in one of my elementary schools, they tend to get a lot of homeless students because there is a homeless shelter there. But, then what nearby, but what will happen is then those families will move, but the students will stay at that school because it's the middle of the school and we know how disruptive it is to move kids between schools. So, I'm just wondering, and I know the staff is working as hard as they can with staff in the county to make this work more smoothly. But, if there's anything that we can do at the board level, the sort of board-to-board level, because some of us here on this board have been trying to talk to the county board about how housing policy is education policy. And I just wonder if you know now, or if you think of anything that we could help you with on that.
Well, thank you. I know that McKinney-Vento, the number of students that we transport, it's hard to imagine that in Fairfax County that we have students that are homeless and in fact, need those services. It is an instructional problem as well. It is a community issue. Yeah, if there's any, any way that we can think of anything, we'll definitely bring it to your attention further than what we've already been working with you on.
Ms. Heinz, I'm hearing a request for a follow-up on how the board could be, a recommendation from the staff and how the board could be more helpful in helping out with the homeless student issue. Okay. We have two more folks, Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. Evans, and we're doing real well, but we're trying to finish by noon. So, Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you, Ted, for keeping us on track today. You and Ms. Schultz have a big job. And thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, for this very thorough report. Minor more comments. I just continue to have concerns about the preventative maintenance and as Ms. Smith said, I think this is something we need to, as we go forward into budgeting, have to put this and understand the potential ramifications of allowing this to continue year after year after year. And it's been in red and it continues to be in red, but we really need to look at that and, and, and deal with it. I do appreciate and I really support Ms. Schultz's advocacy for a visual for the pre-K needs. That's very important and I would actually like to, you didn't go as far as adding that as a next step. I would like to add that as a next step. I think it's important. And even if it can be updated twice yearly because I know those things change, that would, I don't know if that's possible, but that would be very helpful to me as we go-
And Ms. Kofax, just to clarify, not only was I asking for that, but also when Mr. Plattenberg said the facility, the capacity needs-
Yes.
So, it's a double, it's a twofer.
Right, right. In tandem with each other. I think that's important. And then, Ms. Heinz's line of questions or comments- And then Ms. Heinz's line of questions, or comments, gave me a question for transporting. How, once the student becomes homeless, I'm not certain I understand, like where, are they transported back to whatever school district that, or the school they were in prior to becoming homeless? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding.
Not prior to what they're becoming homeless, but once they enroll in one of our schools, and they're in, and their, their housing situation changes, because they're a designated homeless student, we have to transport them back to that school where they were attending.
Okay. That was my understanding. I stated it correctly.
Okay. In fact, it can even require that we transport them outside of the school system.
Okay.
Schools, our school system.
Thank you so much. And you got my next step. Thank you.
Yes, I recorded two in my notes, the geo display of the pre-K and the geo display of capacity. Ms. Evans.
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate you on an excellent report. It's very thorough, and particularly on the increased efficiencies that we continue to see. So I, I appreciate that very much. We, we've certainly made some strides in projections, and that's an area that I'm, I'm glad to see that our projections are improving over time. And I do hope that we continue to look at those projections on a school-by-school basis and, and an area basis too, particularly in those areas where we, we are seeing rapid growth. It's, as, as, I don't need to tell anybody on this board, it's certainly important to be able to, to plan for, for the grade increases in, in student populations that are, that are happening in certain areas, such as mine and others. I did have a, a question about the transfers. On page 18, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. It talks about transfers in, and it says that nearly 10% of our students are in schools other than our base schools. Does that include AAP? Are you including AAP in that number?
In the total 10%?
The 10%?
No.
You're, you're not including that?
No.
So, and then I'm, I'm a little unclear on the, the numbers that, at the top, the 9,500 versus what, you know, what those numbers underneath it add up to? I, I don't, if you, if you want to clarify that for me in a, in a follow-up, I would appreciate it.
Okay, be glad to.
Okay.
Page 18.
It's 18. And so, because 10% of our students transferring to other schools is pretty significant, and I think that's something that we should, we should ponder a bit, particularly if it doesn't include AAP. So that's, that's one thing that I would be interested in, in following up on. I certainly agree with Ms. Heinz that, that we need to be very cognizant of what's going on at the county level on the housing. You know, I have a situation in my area right now where we're looking at some significant housing increases with, with no particular planning for, for schools. And, you know, in, in areas that are overcrowded. So I absolutely agree with Ms. Heinz on that, that that's something where we need to coordinate with the county and make sure as a board, and as a school system, that, that the, the school needs are considered whenever there are significant new developments. So again, congratulations on an excellent report, and thank you for the follow-up.
Okay, next we have Mr. Stork, and there is a growing list of people asking for a second chance, and we're trying to finish by noon. So, Mr. Stork.
Thank you. And the homeless transportation issue, I know, is a, is a major one, it's been that way for a while. And I know that we've had a staff initiative with the county, I think that Dr. Dockery was part of that, and so we've had some joint conversations in the past. I know that, that your predecessor was as well, Mr. Plattenberg. So we, it, it is one that we need to be connected with them far greater than we have been, because it's an expensive one that, and it's not healthy for the kid, and clearly not healthy for our budget to have to transport those kids. I noticed that, that, just a reminder, that, that we have that IDA playground compliance issue coming up, and, and I don't know if that's a mandatory, that we must be compliant within, is it three or five years? I don't remember which. And are there funds that have been set aside, or how are we planning on getting to that compliance level?
Yeah, it's my understanding that it's mandatory to have a plan. The impact is, is really considerable financially, so I don't know how that's gonna be imposed from a federal level because of the requirement.
So there isn't, there isn't right now a five-year, you have to have this done within five years?
The, the understanding of the legislation is that it has to be done in five years. But we're, we're the mindset of that as long as we have a plan and we're working the plan, because of the sticker shock associated with it, that is our approach to dealing with this. We haven't gotten true clarification on that, but, because we're trying to develop a plan to go ahead and execute.
So that could be a follow-up item, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Additionally, because we're gonna hopefully be increasing, well, we will be increasing the amount of activity, free play that kids are gonna be getting, recess, if you will, then that'll become, I think, a bigger issue for our schools, elementary schools. Preventable accidents per mile have gone up, and is there some specific action that you've taken to address that, or is that just one of those flukes and it's a one-off and you're moving on?
Well, it's both. I mean, you, we have taken steps to remind drivers, you know, be careful, be mindful, go slow, drive carefully, gingerly. A lot of the preventable things are such as hitting their mirrors, the side mirrors on, when they're in the parking lot, before the students are released, when they're lining up, they may touch-
So it can be as minor as hitting a mirror is considered, that would be listed as an accident.
Preventable accident, yeah.
Do you have a different tier? I mean, do you have more than one tier for your preventable accident report? So it's one is more signative, significant, and one's less than $100, or less than $200 kind of incident?
Well, we do, we do track them, but we don't really put them into tiers, because they vary between a tree limb falling down and hitting a bus and putting a scratch on it. You know, that may be determined a preventable incident. So I mean, there, there's a number of different categories, if, if you're referring to that, we-
So I guess for, I mean, for my purposes, I don't need to know that a bus mirror was hit, but I would be interested in knowing that if there was an accident that involved a bus and, and children are in it, that would be a different level of interest that I would have to that. So maybe that would be something for our next conversation about whether or not that's, the reporting is really critical to the board. Next item I have is, I just, I really was shocked at the 20% increase in transportation cost per student. And I know this isn't this year, this is the year before last, which is the difficulty of reviewing this report, it's, it's kind of old. But that, I mean, I read, I read the explanation here, but it still seems really, just really an amazing increase in, in, you know, per mile cost for transporting a student. 20% is, that's just is, I don't know, I was just real surprised at that. Any particular, I know, I realize you're saying here about the fuel costs and a few other things that were, that were part of that, but any other kind of thinking about what that means?
No.
$39 per, per pupil to $415 per pupil.
Again, no more than what I've already said, but I mean, the, the point is valid, and that goes back to the question that was asked about improving our reporting out. If I can provide you a better context of the preventable accidents, then it, it gives you a better understanding of what we're really talking about. Same thing with the cost increase. So I think if we can, you know, our takeaways on this is if we can look at further reporting processes, it being delineating a little bit more and giving some more contextual background so you can have some framework. But in terms of the cost increase, no, that's pretty much what I've said.
All I know is that that's not sustainable in 20%.
Correct.
So, wow. This, you won't know off the top of your head, but I, I, there's an item in page eight of your report that you have, it's a, about the energy efficiency, and you use the terminology KB Tu slash SF. And I get the SF, that's square foot. KB could be kilobyte, but I don't know what the TU is.
Kilo British Thermal Units.
Okay.
Per square foot.
So again, that is?
Kilo British Thermal Units per square foot.
Kilo British Thermal-
Thermal Units, yes, sir, per square foot.
Those stinking metric people. Okay, got it.
So.
I actually, I like that, but it's, it's still unfamiliar terminology to, to us. I did love the, under the CO2 E discussion here, you talked about something that we all can appreciate is those fugitive refrigerants. I thought that was kind of interesting. And I obviously know that that means something very significant, because the refrigerants are even more damaging than CO2s. So, and that's keeping track of those, those escaping refrigerants that happen. And then finally, I want to know what we need to do to fix this for Gate House, because we've obviously have it as a, a trial, or at least a, a test version for our, some of our high schools, five, there's five of the schools. In 2012, the water billing, water bottle filling stations in schools. I think, obviously, I would love to see something like that here. I'm tired of contributing to the waste stream, and I know that I would be a user of them. And Gate Houses would be a great example, because you have adults who are very conscious of that, and I think would, so I don't know what the cost is of those, but I would like to see some kind of follow-up of that. Maybe that's more of a school board office, but I think it's more of a Gate House issue, because it'd be, others would, would take advantage of it as well, so. And then last but not least, the fire drill compliance, that's pretty, pretty frustrating and pretty concerning, and four schools not complying with what I consider the most basic part of what we do, safety and security-wise, is they weren't complying with the fire drill standards. And I realize it's a year ago, so hopefully we had 100% compliance this year, but, but I, I would see that as a pretty high concern as a board member anyway, so.
Yes, sir. And you know, some folks waiting till, say, for example, Friday to have that, and then it's inclement weather and really bad, kind of pushes it out, but we're working with folks. For the most part, our, our school staff are incredibly vigilant about those requirements.
Okay, Mr. Stork, you did a really good job of speaking fast. I would like to just review with you, if I could, the action items. There was, can, can you just make sure that we record this properly? There was something about meeting the IDEA regulations.
For the playground replacement.
Playgrounds?
Yes.
IDEA, and I would like to also suggest that we need to know what they are.
Okay. Will we have to give you something on that?
Okay.
You want to look at the next step?
I just want to, what, before we leave the, Mr. Stork, I just want to make sure that we, it was clear what he was asking for, because he went really fast. There was something about accidents.
The playground compliance plan, just, there's, needs to be some kind of, that's obviously a huge amount of money, and we know, and with the, we're changing the elementary school calendar this year, kids are gonna be on the playground, thankfully, a lot more, and so on. That was one of them, the, well, the-
Report back about accidents.
You got that, I think, and, and the transportation cost per student, the 20% increase, although they explained that in here, so I don't know if there's anything else to add to that. So I don't know if there's a follow-up that's necessary for that.
And then something about the bottled water and-
That was the water bottle filling station.
Okay.
For Gate House.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, so there are four people who have signed up, asked for, to speak a second time. And if we could make this really brief, we'll go through those, and then we will wrap this up by voting to accept the report, and then we will review the action items. It is noon right now, so please be brief. Ms. McLaughlin, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Reed, and then Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, touching quickly on page 30, 31 of the report, going back to what Ms. Reed asked about the cost of community use, and that it went up over $2 million after being pretty stable for three years prior to that. When I read just the tiny bit of write-up, there's only a few sentences, either it might be helpful that staff provide us more details, because when I broke it down by the analysis, it looks like it's mostly the utilities and building maintenance that shot up as a differential after three years of kind of being pretty stable and us recouping our costs. So I think before we try to have the conversation that Ms. Reed wants to have about that $2 million loss in, in revenue, I think we need to have a better understanding, was that a one-time thing for utilities and building maintenance? How come it stayed stagnant or cost neutral for three years and now suddenly shot up? That would be helpful to, I think, the board's overall conversation.
So that's asking for a little more clarification to be included as, in that report back. Okay, next is Mrs. Smith.
Just following on with the comment about having a map that shows capacity issues for preschool, I don't know if people were thinking, because we have all these maps in the CIP with the birth per housing unit and all, I didn't know if the thought was to have that information added to the CIP, so it's part of that.
My take, my take, Ms. Darnett Kofax, since you and I are asking for it, I don't think the CIP is the right place for it necessarily, because that's, once that's published, that's sort of a static document, and I don't think that it's necessarily a part of the CIP. I think it's more, you know, Dr. Garza, we've talked before about being able to query and access information, it's almost as if it should just be a periodically standalone, you know, update to the board.
Okay, how about we say this? We've asked for the information, and then that we can sort out later where that gets published. Mr. McElveen has not spoken yet, so I'm going to recognize him.
Mine is very quick. In addition to the visual for the pre-K need, I've also, Mr. Stork and I have both submitted requests over the past year to take the map that's produced by the Weldon Cooper Center on demographics and isolate the Fairfax County portion of that, so that can be used when we go out to community meetings to explain how our county differs. And I think that the pre-K map is definitely something that would be helpful along with that.
Okay, that was a request for a demographics map narrowed down to Fairfax County from Mr. McElveen. Mrs. Reed.
Thank you. One comment and two quick questions. I noticed on page 34, we hadn't discussed about the arrival times, and I, the comment that I'll make there is that it shows in spades the fact that more than half of our high schools are arriving more than 25 minutes early, and which creates, I know it's called the false tier, for those who are very familiar with it, but essentially it ends up getting our kids there even earlier than they need to, and I know we'll be discussing the fix for that in the Blueprint for Change discussion, so just wanted to acknowledge that. And I know the reasons that you have to do it, so I'm not pointing any blame, but that's obviously something that we need to address, because it's only making things worse for our kids. A question, as we talked about the 10% of the total population that's being bused to other places, I know we asked for some more information, but the more I reflected on that, I'd like to understand who we're actually busing overall. So that's the students, the AAP, the academies, disciplines, students with disabilities. I think it's really time that we took a step back and realized who are moving where, and how much we're paying to do that. So that would be my request there. And again, I think that's really important, to see that whole picture. And then last but not least, back to the bus parking, since I, I didn't get a chance to really talk about that earlier. Have you, one of the options you said was to spend more money to lease or buy a, a facility, and I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but have you looked at our partners, Fairfax City Business Partners, for example, who might be able to offer an in-kind opportunity, maybe to use their lots? I, I just wonder if you have any thoughts, like mobile, for example, right now, I think, you know, they're all moving out, and so that might be an opportunity. Is that something we might even pitch to Jay Garant or something, just to see if there is any businesses out there who might be able to help us out? So that would be a next step. I don't expect Jeff to answer that right this second.
Right, so an inquiry about alternative places to park, got it. All right, last is Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, very quickly, one on the community, community use, I've always been one who very much supports community use, because everybody pays for our buildings. An alternative approach to that is also highlighting in our budget, just as the board of supervisors will highlight those areas that, that positively impact students and families. You know, they always do that little separate piece, and we are also, you know, allocating this money. We could always, on community use, highlight we are allocating the community's use of our buildings, not directly related to academics, but because the, these are resources for the entire community. And then on the issue of the special ed transportation, I would, as we've asked for more information on that, I would also suggest that we take a look at the, sometimes the medical needs of the children we are transporting, because that may also indicate the, the cost, because we have to transport the kids. And sometimes you have very fragile children, the bus arrives, mom's out there, I've been in that situation, student is just not well enough to go today, so the bus goes on, but we are still having to run the transportation in hopes that you can get the student on the bus, and may or may not occur that morning. So that severity of, of disability and the challenge of just helping our kids stay in school may also be a cost factor as we're looking at analysis of that. Thanks.
All right. What we're gonna do here is, we will vote on the motion that's on the table, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Garza to review the next steps, and then we will, no, we, no, this is a motion, there's a motion on the table that we, to accept, I'll repeat- I'll repeat the motion in a second. Then Dr. Garza will review the next steps and then we will adjourn and make room for the next meeting. Okay, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, good. Right, we're all set. I have to catch up with the times here. All right, so the motion on the table is to accept the Facilities and Transportation Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. All those in favor? I believe I see every hand raised. It is unanimous, that passes. So now, dear friends across the way, let's review next steps. First one is to provide information on whether other school districts comparable in size provide the same type of transportation services based on the increase. Okay, that was one of the, that was one recommendation from Ms. McLaughlin.
I thought Megan wanted to know the cost per pupil, not the services. Weren't you looking for the cost per pupil for transportation in other districts similar to ours?
Tell me where it is.
Provide information.
Take off comparable and just say, cost per pupil.
So keep comparable inside?
Yeah.
How are it nice?
It's not the type of transportation.
Cost.
So take that out.
Just say provide cost.
Okay, the second one, develop a feasibility analysis on providing the community use service in a more cost-effective manner with clarification provided on recent increases in this service.
Well, that sounds overly complex. Just, I would just say review whether, review. Review whether community use can be provided in a more cost-effective manner. But I'd also said potentially address with the board of supervisors if we're underwriting the public's use of the facilities. You know, can we maybe get a little more?
I really thought it was really isolating better what the true cost.
Yes, thank you.
I thought that's, that's kind of what I heard the conversation is.
Yes.
And that's what I wrote down.
Okay.
Just better isolate the true cost of providing community use.
Identify.
Because we build in a lot of maintenance and all that, so.
Turn allocation, you know.
Ms. Velkoff?
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, that had been my next step request, which I don't think it's captured up there. But it was, before we could go to what Ms. Reed had suggested, it was first of all, just asking staff to provide more detail or more, you know, information on, so what Dr. Garza was saying was the first step really is breaking out the actual cost and the changes over the last year.
Right, do we have it?
So Dr. Garza, do you want to take another stab at the language?
So I would think you need to take out the part about could it be provided in a more cost-effective manner? That will come later. First, what we want to do is understand what the costs are. Then when we see that, then we can make a decision if we should charge more or do things differently.
About just identify the true cost of the service of community use.
I don't, I don't want to lose the idea, though, of coming back with ideas about how we can be more cost-effective. Because we might get the information and so what? So I think the other part is important. I agree, one piece needs to happen before the other, but I don't want to lose the fact that that's, that's some expenditures that we really need to be discussing.
Okay, the next one that I recorded, and I don't see it up there, so I'm going to confirm, was I believe Mr. Moon requested a report back on how to get longer life from vehicles. Am I correct, Mr. Moon?
On minivans.
I'm sorry?
On minivans.
On minivans, okay. How to get, report back on how to get longer life from minivans. Okay. And the next one that I took down, which I don't see there, is a report back on the state reimbursed costs. It started off as special ed, but I think we wanted to generalize that. So report back on state reimbursements for.
Transportation.
For transportation. Right, for our purposes. Okay, the next one, yes, provide information on how the board could be more helpful in addressing student homeless issues. Ms. Hines, does that capture your point? Okay.
But I, I also heard another piece of that, and correct me if I'm wrong, about also the board weighing in on county decisions on housing so that we make sure, at least try to make sure, that they consider schools when they look at housing developments.
So could we express that as a next step then?
Yes, oh, okay, maybe it's another bullet, but.
I think so.
You brought it up first.
I did, and I think it would at least be another bullet. I'm actually wondering how facilities and transportation could help us, you know what I mean? Like what are we asking them to tell us that we don't already know? This is more sort of, I talked about it because it's a conversation that we need to have with the county board. I don't know that facilities and transportation can give us any more information than we already have, but I don't know.
Well, I guess I, because I'm seeing this situation where there are redevelopments that just don't include schools. So I think we should, we should at least have flag it somehow here to say that, you know, we should work, the school board should work with staff to figure out a method by which we can weigh in with the county on housing redevelopment. That's.
Because it's by right development where we don't always get, it's by right development where we don't always get to weigh in.
But isn't the core issue about homelessness and transportation that it is anything else?
Well, this is a second thing, it's a different issue.
It's a broader question of how housing affects what we do. Right, absolutely. And so I could see a separate bullet that just kind of tasks us with following up on it rather than asking staff to come back with anything specific. Because I don't know that I know what to ask them for, but.
Well, it's about particular housing.
On how housing development affects facilities.
Yes, that's a good way of putting it. Yeah, I guess that, that pretty much captures it, yeah.
Yeah, Pam, I, and this is maybe, maybe small, but instead of housing developments, I would say development because they're not all.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Effects, housing development effects, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to keep moving here. Determine how to better display capacity issues and pre-K information in future reports and also provide a demographic map highlighting Fairfax County. That was sort of a couple of things there. Provide information on playground ADA compliance.
That was intended to be more of, not the information, but just some kind of whatever the plan is, some, how that, I mean, it doesn't have to be now, but then the CIP or somewhere, we're going to need to address that issue. So I don't know where it fits, but somehow it needs to be incorporated into our, the planning work that the board's doing, the cost of that. Yes, I don't, again, I don't know if it's in the CIP or not. I'm happy to defer on that, but it just, it needs to be, it's more than just information. It's the plan for compliance, whatever that is. And it doesn't have to be right away, but obviously you all will be putting together some kind of plan and just want to make sure we're engaged on that.
And while we end it with in future documentation, which leaves it open to maybe the CIP, right? Then we have provide information on water bottle filling station at Gatehouse. Mr. Stork, you also had one about something to do with the accidents. I don't see that up here. I kept, I had trouble following that one. Something about the bus accident rate?
Forget about it.
Oh, yeah, but I was going to take care of that in the governance because I think that's a, that's a.
Okay, so it's not a next step.
Issue that doesn't, we need to address.
And then finally, determine whether there are opportunities with business partners to provide alternative places for buses, bus parking, sorry. Ms. Reed.
The one I don't see is the, provide the breakdown on bus costs and where, who we're transporting. You know, what.
I had actually asked also, I think it's connected with this, about a better explanation of page 18, the transfers between schools and the 10% of students being, that are transferring. So that's just, that's just informational.
Okay, we got it covered? All right. This, this work session is completed and.
18 minutes behind already.
Yes, we are. In five minutes, the next one, governance, three, just keep going, all right.
Three-minute break for.
Have to have a two-minute break in between, so bathroom break, whatever everybody needs.